Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All right, everybody's here. I'll open the floor for public comment. Just to let everybody know it's for agenda items only. You have three minutes. Three and a half for Judge Beeler.
It won't even take a minute. I just wanted to say regarding the community corrections application that of course it's on the consent agenda, so I hope it's getting passed, but to thank community corrections because that helps us a lot in the courts and it helps our community to keep people under supervision without keeping that cost in the jail going up. So, just to say that. And I also wanted to thank for learning early and the 80/20 under the health insurance because I know a lot of the employees passed on to me their thanks to all of you. So, I just wanted, I know people come here when they want to complain and I wanted to pass on that everybody was really thankful for the 80/20 on the insurance because they realized that's a substantial benefit. And so, I wanted you to know that people were thankful for that.
Right. Thank you. I'm thankful that they're thankful. Anybody else? Right, the floor is closed for public comment. Additions or deletions to the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add under new business, add a number three, and that is discussion on moving our August meeting to our regular meeting date, which would be August 7th. Yes, sir.
From the 14th to the 7th.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Commissioner Marquetti, you're back up.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I would like to move for approval of the agenda with the addition of, under new business number three, the discussion on moving our meeting to the regular August 2nd, 7th date.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor in support. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda is approved. No recognitions. Presentation, we have area agency on agency for fiscal year 26, annual implementation plan. Hi. You hit the button in the middle, in the red light, there you go. Now we can hear you.
All right. And I think, okay, so the slides are up there. I don't know if you have them as well, but.
We've got it up there in front of us.
Perfect. Oh, you guys are fancy. All right. Good evening. My name is Amanda Drew and I serve as a planning and community development manager at Region Four, Area Agency on Aging. I have with me today Teresa Yurk. She's our COO. And Christine Van Landingham, our CEO, sends her regards that she could not be here, her regrets. So, it's my pleasure to be with you all today to highlight key elements of our fiscal year 2026 annual implementation plan, which takes effect on October 1st, 2025. Region Four, Area Agency on Aging is charged with the vital responsibility of planning, developing, and implementing a coordinated system of services to support the needs of older adults, caregivers, and individuals with disabilities. Our services extend across Beryon, Cass, and Van Buren counties. Currently, 28.6% of the tri-county population, more than 80,000 individuals, are over the age of 60. 30.1% of those are here in Cass County. This is significantly higher than the state average of 26.2% and well above the national average of 24.2%. This growing demographic emphasizes just how critical our work is in the region. I wanted to highlight some of the extremely important partnerships that we have in Cass County. Organizations including Cass County Council on Aging, Cass County Transportation Authority, Cass County DHHS, Disability Network, the Health Department, Flowers Early Learning Center, Polk Hagan Health Center, Adult Foster Care and Nursing Homes, and many more help us to ensure older adults can live independently and with dignity. So, over the past year, we've had some truly impactful accomplishments. Our Arts and Aging partnership was recognized at the national level for bringing together the local arts, public health, higher ed, philanthropy, and the business community to harness the power of the arts to inform and engage southwest Michigan residents about public health needs like dementia. The project won the 2024 Aging Innovations Award. And our very own Christine Van Landingham was named the recipient of the 2024 National Excellence in Leadership Award, which is a well-deserved honor. Advocacy efforts statewide, including ours here locally, led to increased funding for the embossment program and adjustments to the Medicaid spend down policy. In addition, we welcomed Michigan Attorney General Dana Nestle to the campus for a presentation about scams targeting older adults. Attendees learned how to recognize a variety of potential scams as well as received resources for consumer protection. The event had over 70 community members in attendance. We worked with MyGen, the Michigan LGBTQ+ elders network, to review our policies and provide culturally responsive training to our staff. Once completed, we were officially credentialed as an LGBTQ+ older adult-friendly organization. We celebrated our 50th anniversary by honoring 50 inspiring older adults over the age of 60 showcasing the power of positive aging. We secured several grants, including HUD's Older Adults Home Modification Grant, the No War Wrong Door Grant, and Safe Haven Replication Grant, and the Community Care Core Grant. So, lots of grants this year. We were approved by Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Service to deliver a specialized model of dementia care, Guiding and Improved Dementia Experience, or GUIDE. We partner with home and community-based primary, specialty, and mental health care partners and providers across southwest Michigan, developing structural linkages for seamless referral and care coordination to ensure every individual and caregiver impacted by dementia receives comprehensive, tailored assessment, care planning, supports, and services for improved quality of life and ability to remain living in their home. And we achieved veteran connector status, enhancing our ability to serve local veterans more effectively. Despite our progress, we face challenges and with them opportunities to grow. So, the number of adults aged 60 and older continues to grow, along with the number of family members, friends, and neighbors needing to step into the role of informal caregivers. Older adults and their care partners present increasing complexities and their needs due to the growing prevalence of mental health and chronic health conditions. In the face of increasing demand, funding allocations to home and community-based services as well as payment rates from the My Choice Waiver continue to not keep pace with the rising costs of service delivery due to economic inflation. This imbalance poses a significant challenge to maintain or expand services. The current climate of proposed policy changes and funding reductions poses significant risks to essential programs supporting older adults, informal caregivers, and direct care workers. These threats could increase poverty and housing instability among seniors, reduce access to critical healthcare, nutritional and caregiver supports, lead to higher caregiver burnout and institutionalization, and further strain staff and volunteer capacity at a time when demand continues to rise. And shortages in direct care, social work, and nursing, and high volunteer turnover make recruiting and retaining qualified and diverse staff and volunteers challenging not only for us, but our partners and providers as well. Still, our commitment is unwavering. We aim to enhance services and advocate for systems that allow every individual, especially those from underserved communities, to age with dignity and independence. We deliver services through a mix of agency-provided programs, contracted partners, and purchased services. You can see in the graph that we have different areas of services that we provide. So, access services include our information and access team, care management, care transition coordination and support, options counseling, outreach, and transportation. In-home services include personal care, chore services, medication management, and the purchase of assisted devices and technology for those who need it. Community services include counseling, disease prevention, and health promotion, elder abuse prevention, legal assistance, and the services of our long-term care embossment. Nutrition services include home-delivered meals, congregant meals, nutrition education, and nutrition training. We have ramped up our services over the last few years for caregivers of older adults. This service includes case management, information and assistance, support groups, training, education, adult day services, and respite care. These services are provided directly to the caregiver to offer support and assistance to allow them to continue to care for their care recipient. And our older relative caregiver services include support groups and education for our kinship care providers. We also have strategic goals that continue to guide our work. So, the first goal is to improve the accessibility of services to Michigan's communities and people of color, immigrants, and LGBTQ+ individuals. So, we've done this through continued expansion of our educational resources that are available 24/7 via the online professional development platform, Relias, and extending these resources to volunteers, caregivers, and providers through the caregiver education platform, Trualta. We've had annual agency-wide conversations to reaffirm organizational group agreements. We have a staff-led respect and belonging committee. Our monthly internal agency newsletter features a respect and belonging corner sharing educational resources such as articles and videos designed to enhance staff awareness and engagement. On-site, in-person information and assistance services continue at trusted locations, including United Christian Services in Van Buren County and neighbor by neighbor in southwest Buren County. We are still working to hopefully have that at the Polk Hagan Health Center here in Cass County. And we have a strategic partnership with Voices for Health, which resulted in development of a dedicated Spanish line. The second goal is to expand the reach of information and awareness of aging network services, ensuring all older adults and caregivers can access culturally and linguistically appropriate information and have awareness and access to quality services where and when they need them. So, we do this by having our bimonthly partner network meetings that engage 40-plus community members, facilitating collaboration and improving access to aging services. We partnered, partner with the Harold Paladins to successfully host our annual senior expo. And we have enhanced monthly community communications through our newsletters. Our third goal is to promote social interaction and connectedness, including expanding access to technology and transportation. So, this includes active participation in our local transportation advisory councils, expanding opportunities for older adults and individuals with disabilities to volunteer as friendly callers, providing meaningful engagement for volunteers, and directly addressing social isolation and loneliness among community members. We did conduct a comprehensive caregiver community needs assessment with active participation from 159 caregivers. And we've successfully implemented and sustained virtual support groups for caregivers and partnered with Corewell Health, the Alzheimer's Association, and the Parkinson's Foundation to host monthly in-person support groups. Our fourth goal is to increase the number of well-trained, qualified, and supportive multicultural direct care workers through collaboration by elevating the workforce, improving retention, promoting its collective value, and supporting opportunities to increase wages. We do this by establishing a direct care workforce coalition, addressing challenges in recruitment, training, and retention. We have our Trualta, which is our caregiver education platform. And we honor an outstanding direct care worker of the year, significantly elevating community awareness, recognition, and esteem of the direct care workforce. And then finally, our last goal is to inspire a dementia-friendly community movement throughout southwest Michigan. This includes implementing that guide model I talked about earlier, expanding our dementia minds community events where individuals living with dementia share their lived experiences, continuing our Dementia Friends workshops, which we have done throughout all three counties. And then we've also started a, we developed a strategic plan for sector-specific dementia-friendly businesses, first responders, and volunteer training. So, we've made great strides this past year, but our work is far from over. Looking ahead to fiscal year 26, we're inspired by our successes and motivated by our opportunities. We have a lot of great things to look forward to, including a marketing campaign to highlight caregivers, continued development of the Direct Care Workforce Coalition, implementing that dementia-friendly, sector-specific training, offering our Dementia Friends workshops. So far this year, we've provided education to an additional 79 community members, implement the grants that we have received, but continue writing for additional grant funding. We will be implementing a new service line called Caregiver Case Management, which will provide in-home services directly to caregivers, and then begin the process of developing our new multi-year plan, which will include community conversation, surveys, and analysis of other data pieces that I hope Cass County residents will also be involved in, and much more. So, that's all I have for you today. So, thank you for your time and attention and just wanted to open it up for questions or comments.
Could you go back to that goal slide?
This one?
Yeah. So, with that one, but prior to that, you had said that you had achieved the veteran connector status. So, after an individual would meet the requirements for your services, then you all would probably find out their veteran status. And is that how that works, or is there a separate, like, department or something?
Our information and access team does a really good job of screening all of our calls, all of our individuals who are in need of services, and one of the questions is about being a veteran.
And then at that point, do you work with, like, we have a veteran service officer, VFWs?
Yep.
And you'll work with them to get other benefits and things that they're entitled to?
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, we would work really hard to connect them to the correct service that would fit their needs.
And that's after they're enrolled and go through the screening process?
It's after they go through the screening progress, process, but it's not necessarily an enrollment.
It's not an age limit. We don't want to say that, but once you're in, then you find it out. Got it?
Yeah. Do you want to add anything else?
Then the other one?
You might want to add something else to that.
Sure. I'll just add that anyone, any adult over 18, can access our services. That's a common myth we're presenting today on our annual implementation plan, which is pretty specific to older adults and caregivers. But the Area Agency on Aging serves individuals 18 and older with chronic conditions or physical disabilities. And anyone who contacts our information and access team would be asked, have you served? A lot of the education around becoming a veteran connector, veteran connector organization is around that, the veteran and military cultural competency training. And part of that is helping people to know that asking someone if they've been, if they're a veteran, or if they know, if a family member has been a veteran, can sometimes preclude people from answering in the affirmative. And instead, asking them, have you served?
Right.
Is a, is a stronger, gets stronger response. And then, so you, as Amanda was trying to say there, is that you don't have to be enrolled in one of our programs to access our help with accessing veteran care. Anyone who calls information and access gets that assistance too and gets warm handoffs to the veteran service officers and either support.
Collaborate with them and deal with specific issues like PTSD or veteran disability ratings, the VA hospitals and all of that.
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
That's great. Yeah. So, the next one, I'll say that I have served.
Well, thank you for your service.
So, the other one, you said improve the accessibility of service to Michigan's communities and people of color, immigrants, and LGBTQ+ individuals. Without getting into politics of all that, I can understand immigrants with the, with, like, language barriers and things. But the other two, how would, how, how does that, how are they affected, or what, what needs to happen there?
Do that one too? I'll just.
So, part of the Older American Act challenges us to target our services to those in greatest social and economic need. A lot of what we do in that space then is ensure that we're targeting to communities that are traditionally underserved or maybe have economic disadvantages. So, oftentimes, those are individuals who identify with the groups that are, that are listed there. This, as you mentioned, without getting too much into politics.
Please don't. We've got enough of that.
Yeah. This was, this was a state mandated goal for all area agencies on aging throughout Michigan and was dated 2022. I imagine that there will be changes to the language in our next multi-year plan that, as Amanda said, we're, we're embarking on this fall.
Because they're leaving out a bunch of other things, you know?
Absolutely.
Because the canned response from the state included other things, and I'm like, y'all are missing, if you want to be inclusive, you better add that too.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for your time. Anybody else got anything?
I just want to say that I appreciate the focus on dementia. Like, I don't have any, any histories in my family, but, you know, I know quite a few people to deal with it. It's becoming a, it's becoming a big problem.
Yeah.
So, that is definitely a good thing to be focusing on, for sure.
Earlier in your presentation, you spoke about some of the grants that you're going after, and it sounds like you guys are doing a great job on that. It was reported earlier this year that you got a grant for a million dollars from HUD Organization for Low Income Seniors. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yep, we received a million dollars from HUD's Older Adult Home Modification Program that we are just now getting the go-ahead to move forward and getting staff trained. So, we're hoping to get that up and running in the next couple of months. That will be for home modifications, not home repairs. So, we have to be very careful of how we market that to individuals. We can't replace roofs. But if they need grab bars in the bathrooms, it's, it's really about accessing, making sure their home is accessible to continue to live there.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, we appreciate you all. Thank you for what you do for us and our community.
Thank you.
All right. Item J, proposed consent agenda. Vice Chair Lawrence.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, M-98-2025 through M-104-2025 with a one-time vote, with a one-time roll call vote.
Second.
Motion on the floor in support. Any discussion? Thank you Judge Beeler for pointing out the other specifics that we have in the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. District One, Commissioner Langley, you have anything for us?
Nothing at this time.
District Two, Commissioner Lawrence.
Nothing at this time.
District Three, Commissioner Northrup.
Nothing.
District Four, ah, for my district, we had a bell that came, this, this bell's probably 150, 175 years old. We took it from the church and Jackie Taylor, Jackie Bell Taylor, got it to me. I cleaned it. It's, was stored in the facilities maintenance garage for what, a year or two? A year and a half.
You just wanted to clean it?
Yeah, oh my God, it took me two days, but I'm the steel guy, so I cleaned it. And we finally got it mounted by the township, and I don't know the masonry group that did it, but they built the stone monument for it, and I just went there today and put a good coat of industrial grease on it to protect it from the weather, and I volunteered to do that for the rest of my life or my term here in Cass County.
Is that in Howard?
It's in Polk Hagan Township, and it's right out front. It's really nice. We didn't put the striker on there because I warned them about that. People would be out there, sheriff would get some noise complaints. So, go out there and take a look at it. I'm pretty proud of that. And thanks to Jackie Taylor to have coordinated that, and the lady that donated it, I think she's passed, but we got it done prior to her passing, so that's a big deal, big deal for our township. That's it. Yep, there we go. Thanks to them also. District Five, Commissioner Grace.
Nothing to report, sir.
District Six.
Nothing to report.
Don't let us down, District Seven.
Okay. All right. And District Seven, Commodity Day has been changed, and it's now called USDA Food Day. And the minimum that someone can make and be a participant has been raised to $1,997 per month. And just for everybody's benefit, I don't have anybody that makes that.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. And then, the Mobile Food Pantry was held Tuesday, July 8th. Mason Township has established the Meetup and Eatup Program again this year, thanks to the hard work and persistence of their clerk, Kristin Levann. Mark your calendars for September 24th for the Used Tire, Hazardous Waste, and Used Electronics at the Road Commission from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And this is our second event of the year, and I'm sure it will be well-attended. I attended the Materials Management Planning Committee, and we had presentations from composters. A portion of the meeting also was about food waste and how that can be mitigated. The Planning Commission met on June 25th, and we approved Rezone from manufacturing to agriculture residential for Howard Township, and we acknowledged a road abandonment for the Road Commission, and that's East Road in Polk Hagan Township. We have a draft of the master plan, and that will be reviewed at the July 24th, 2025 meeting. We'll take a good look at it. The planner is coming that day, and after that, you all will be getting copies, and we'll start our 60 days. I also want to mention that Ambrosia Nelson has been an enormous help with the master plan. We absolutely could not have done it without her. She tore into that thing and helped make all of the corrections. She sent pictures when requested, so she's done a great, she, she really helped us.
Did you just volunteer to make her the first employee of the month that you were talking about last week?
Well, we could. Moving right along, in June, the Board of Health met, and there is great concern over the loss of funding. A motion was made to cover the shortfall that they expect. Tick numbers are very high. Dr. Wild said that residents need to be aware of spending any time outdoors, and a discussion was held about drive-in flu clinics, and we very well may have some in Cass. And a discussion was held about drive-in flu clinics, and we very well may have some in Cass. The July Board of Health was held in our chambers, and thanks very much for allowing us. Our meeting place lacked some internet connection, so we met in the chambers. Director Danielle Persky, she broke down the current concerns regarding funding. The big funding thing for them is there's a loss of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a grant, and it impact, impacts the Health Department. It is the grant that supported communicable disease monitoring and infection prevention. Lastly, the Board of Public Works met, and they reviewed a plan to forego applying for a grant and going with a design build. There's a lot of hoops you have to jump through with USDA grants, and so they're looking at maybe doing a design build. All entities involved have improved the project, except for the Van Buren Board of Commissioners. The next meeting of the Board of Public Works will be in August. Nats didn't meet, so I didn't go to Nats. That's it.
And remember, at the Board of Health, they talked about the bats with rabies also, and the closest place was Kalamazoo.
Kalamazoo, right. In fact, we got a, and if anybody wants to see it, I brought it. We got a map of where the bats are in the state of Michigan.
Yeah. It's like thirteen confirmed cases of them transmitting rabies.
Rabies, yeah.
You know, blah, blah, blah.
So if anybody wants to see it.
No, I'm not doing that again.
If anybody wants to see that map, I know I brought it, so I got it somewhere. Oh, yeah, here it is. Here it is, even in the, even in the U.P. So, there's thirteen bats.
Cold vampire bats up there.
That's it.
Did you save any for RJ?
We're good.
All right. So I'll, I won't, I won't call on you. All right. Next one for his very first administrator's report. You're up, man. You've got five seconds. Go.
Commissioner Marquetti's a, he's a hard act to follow, too. I attended the Market One Annual, I guess, an annual celebration they do.
Annual Awards.
Awards banquet. It was well-attended by us, and it was, it was a good time and a good educational experience for me to get to know what they do. I've spent, it seems like I've spent much time on the comp, class study, compensation classification study that you have all received. I've taken a tour of the Sheriff Department. I appreciate the sheriff giving me a grand tour of his facility. And it was very thorough, and I appreciate that. And just been meeting with department, meeting with and meeting department heads as I've had a chance to. And I'll do more of that, just kind of getting out and familiarizing myself with, with Cass County and, and with the staff and with players in the, in the community stakeholders. And just kind of, I'm a history minor, I guess, almost a double major. I think I was a credit short of a double major, but I've always been a history buff. And I'm starting to delve into the history of the community a little bit, and I find it really, really interesting. So I'm going to continue to do that, too. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions for administrator? Thank you, sir. Good job. Appreciate you here. County partners, nope, don't see her. Elected officials, dream commissioner, I'm going to pick on you first. Rains in the forecast. Turn it back on. Push it again. There you go.
Oh, there you go. Reiterate what Commissioner Marquetti said. It was interesting, at the Board of Public Works, when the contractors, even though rural development was offering this lower interest rate, it was going to drive up the construction cost because of the paperwork. So he prepared a spreadsheet, and we could actually, remember, we potentially, the one that looked the best would knock ten years off it, too. So anyway, it was quite an eye-opener. I kept a copy of it. Anybody's got any interest in that. Cass County's traditionally done a lot of work, and we've had a lot of success with rural development. But you know, the world's ever-changing. And so it was kind of a wake-up call. We're, I'm looking at things a little differently, too, in my world, so I thought that's kind of interesting. I was just, came down from Parks. Commissioner Barrera was on that board, too. We're having the bid opening on the twenty-second for the lawless improvements, this building, nine o'clock. So if you happen to be in the building on twenty-second at nine, pop in right across from Parks, that'll be our bid opening on that. Tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, I'm meeting with Eagle officials at the McMillan Dam on my dam removal project. So maybe a moment of silence would be appreciated.
We'll pray for you.
There are some individuals that are going to be there, that I'm going to be quite honest with you. Our thinking is quite different. And so I'm going to have to obviously be on my best behavior, which my mom taught me well. But basically, this is to decide what they're going to allow us to do and what we're not. It's a very unique situation. We actually have two dams there. I want to go down to one right at Lawrence Road and fix Lawrence Road, the dip and all that. We already worked this out with the Road Commission. And so for, for the county, a dam comes off the list, so that's great. But then the structure at the road would be easier going forward to maintain. Apparently, there's been some blowback to that. They want the dam to go, but they're not understanding why this other redundant dam, for lack of a better term, why would we would want to remove that.
Well, is that, does that create a silt pond back to Lawrence Road, that dam on, you're, you're talking Bunker Lake?
So the impound at Lawrence Road would be a series of step pools, so that way fish and things can, actually, it'd be beautiful. And number two, we would relinquish the easements to the adjacent property owners. And County Cass just steps on out of that. Lawrence Road Commission's agreed to stop any, they have some issues there at Lawrence Road. There's guardrails and stuff. We're going to fix that all up, get rid of all that, and set a control structure, which would just be a glorified culvert with a little weir wall welded in. And then we rock it up on both sides, so a fish could even get through there.
You had me at better fishing.
Yeah, right. Number two, on that east side of the road, there are some houses now that would be able to get out to the lake. Okay? So I saw it as, hey, look, this looks pretty good. But all of a sudden, maybe I gave them too much at once. I don't know. So anyway, rather, we did some back and forth, and so finally, I talked to the engineer and said, I want them on site. I want them on site. They need to see exactly what, and I said, he called me this morning, I said, they better be bringing their boots. So anyway, I'm going to get through this, but it's never easy with these people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Judge Beeler.
I just wanted to ask you to mark your calendars for September twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday, from eight-thirty to four-thirty. It's going to be the day out at Southwest Michigan College of the Southwest Michigan Opioid Summit. Lunch will be provided, and it's going to be a great day to not only just learn about the opioid crisis, how it's being addressed, and I guess the next phase of where things are at with that. And there's going to be presenters from a whole range of people, including medical doctors, law enforcement, and people with lived experience. And we would love it if commissioners attended. It is a free event, and you get fed. So even if you can't come for the whole day, don't let that stop you from signing up. Come for part of the day, even if you can only come for one session, because I think you'd find it really informative. And it's really good, too, because that's a place where we can get feedback. Because as you know, being Chair of our County Opioid Settlement Fund Committee, we want to get ideas about how we can address problems, and it's great to get together with community members. And then the other thing, I was just going to ask you to mark your calendars for October third, which is a Friday from four to six P.M. out at Dodd Park. We're going to have our Reunification Day celebration for our drug court programs. And that's always a very nicely-attended event, to see the families and to see the people who've overcome issues with addiction and are now contributing members of society, which we like to see. And it's always a very positive event to see the families and their children. So even if you can't stop out there for the whole time, if you can stop out, I'm sure there'll be food, and it's fun to see the families and their children, and also to see our beautiful Dodd Park, and that's a free event as well. So I'll send out information via email, but I just wanted to ask you to please consider attending, because it does mean a lot to everyone to see all of you, because sometimes people only know you by your names, and they love to see you out in the community and to put a face with your name. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Treasure Anderson.
I want to let everyone know that the Cass County Twenty Twenty-Five Tax Reverted Property Auction will take place online August twenty-seventh, online at www dot tax dash sale dot info. Starting thirty days before the auction, you can begin placing bids. Bids can be modified up until the day of the auction. If you're a first-time bidder, you do need to register at that website. You'll also find a full list of properties all across the state of Michigan, important dates and answers to frequently asked questions there. The website has, again, those catalogs for other counties in the state as well. I do have a few printed copies of the auction information with me today for anyone who would prefer a hard copy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff. Good. That's good. Vic.
I think all of you know that a prosecutor's office does a lot of different things, but one of the most important things we do is jury trials. And again, that makes a real difference in the safety of the community. If we're successful and prevailing in those things, it, again, certainly adds to public safety. And part and parcel of that is making sure that we have a good, experienced, savvy staff to do that. And I'm very, as you've heard me say, you know, in previous meetings and so forth, very pleased with the staff that we currently have as far as their experience, their abilities. I, I know that all of you received the press release, and probably most if not all of you looked at it. But again, we had a very satisfying win last week. Again, an individual had come up from South Bend and tried to strangle one of our citizens that lived just outside of Niles in Cass County. Pretty terrifying event for the woman, Jason Ronning, who was just a phenomenal trial attorney, took that case to trial. Were able to get a guilty verdict in short order on that, and sentencing is set for that on August fifteenth. And again, you know, it's kind of like most things in life. If you have a fairly inexperienced staff, and sometimes that happens in every, every profession, sports, you know, every line of life and so forth, it's sometimes tougher to achieve success in these type of cases. But again, you know, as we've seen in the last year or two, with this experienced staff, we're seeing really strong results. And actually, fewer jury trials, because the defense attorneys know that, again, they're up against an experienced staff that's more than likely going to prevail in the case, and that certainly was the case. But on the other hand, we've got some nice young attorneys, Aiden, Aiden Traynor-Chasse, who, by the way, just had her first child early this week, and so we're thrilled about that. Young, healthy baby girl, and she may not want me to announce that, but I did anyways.
Too late now. It's on YouTube now.
It is, it is. And so she's, she's very happy about that, thrilled, and we're thrilled for her, too. So, but while she's taking care of that very important business, one of our other newer attorneys, Nick Laban, had a jury trial in District Court on a drunk driver. And again, as we all know, I won't belabor that, but drunk drivers kill more people than anybody other than those that kill, or that utilize opiates, which obviously the judge just referenced as well. So got a guilty as charge on that case, too. So your, your assistant prosecutors are doing their job for you, certainly on one of the most important things we do, which is jury trial. So just wanted to give you that update.
They went pretty quickly from the start of that incident till the, the verdict. That was relatively quick, wasn't it?
On the drunk driving case?
No, the, the strangle.
I believe it's forty-five minutes, and you know, I've had jury trials where sometimes it'll be a day or two and so forth.
I mean, from the time of arrest till...
Yeah, that happened in June of, it actually happened in June of twenty twenty-four, so it was a little under a year, which is, you know, back at the start of my career, we saw in Michigan where it was not unusual for jury trials to be two years out from the episode. A good thing that our Supreme Court and our, you know, statewide officials have done is they've, you know, really put in some parameters, some guardrails, to try to shorten that period of time. So, you know, Chair Jones, such as in this case, it happened within less than a year. So that's, that's a major improvement over the course of decades, so, and we're glad to see that, too.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, you bet. Thank you.
The Monica McMichael.
Is that why you call me last every time?
Well, you're right next to me.
All right. Couple things. I always talk elections. For those of you that live in the Marcellus Public, or Marcellus Community School District, you have an August fifth special election. Please, please vote. Absentee ballots are available from your local clerks now, or polls will be open all day on Tuesday, August fifth, from seven A.M. to eight P.M. Speaking of elections, in May, we had a special election, very, very, very low turnout. And we had about twelve hundred people come out and vote. And despite the low turnout, we still have to put in all of the work and order all of the supplies. And for twelve hundred people to come out and vote, that cost us, just to open a few precincts, twenty-five thousand dollars. So people don't realize the cost that goes into that. These special elections that are called, they cost money. Speaking of elections, there is a group that is trying to, once again, change our elections in Michigan and bring in ranked choice voting. If you're not familiar with it, look it up. They have submitted language to the State Board of Canvassers circulating petitions and want to put it on the November twenty-twenty-six ballot, but they're putting deceptive language in there. They've put hot-button topics saying that they will require paper ballots and require audits for every election. Guess what? We already have that, but they're trying to trick people. Ranked choice voting is not supported by any county or local clerk that I know of, no matter what their party is. So please do your research. Speaking of jury trials, my office handles jury summons. And if you saw the press release, we had to upgrade our software. So we're hoping that things go well, because the next batch of summons that go out are going to be postcards. It's going to save us money. Hopefully, work. There's going to be a Q.R. code where people can scan that Q.R. code and fill everything out digitally. If they're not comfortable with that, they can give us a call, and we will walk them through it over the phone or have them come in. We'll, we'll get it, we'll help them out no matter what. And finally, I just want to give a shout-out to a couple departments that I have seen and heard a lot of more than normal. Our Facilities Department has been here. They've had their hands full with things going on. And also to our County Sheriff's Office. I live near Diamond Lake, and all day Saturday, I heard sirens. I think you guys were hopping and very, very busy, so thank you for all you do. I, we appreciate you. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll try to remember to call you first next meeting. Monica will be first next meeting. I won't either. New business, M one oh five, twenty twenty-five, motion to approve budget adjustments for jail repairs and fire safety upgrades. Motion on the floor in support. Any discussion? It's well-needed. All right. Any or none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. M one oh six, twenty twenty-five, motion to approve budget adjustments for Eagle Materials Management Planning Program grant.
I'd like to make that motion as well, and thank you. Jennifer?
Motion on the floor in support. Any discussion? It's pretty cut and dry. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Number three, the discussion item was to change the date from the fourteenth to the seventh of August.
Yes, sir. August seventh would be our regular monthly meeting, regular meeting. But traditionally, we don't meet during the fair week. And this year, the fair week was, is mostly in July. And I don't think that the fair dates were out when the new calendar was made. So I would like to suggest that we keep August seventh, Thursday, August seventh, as our regular meeting and not do August fourteenth, and where we would, we, we have time to let people know.
Because we were going to do the regular meeting and then the cowl right after, right afterwards, right?
No, we weren't, no. The cowl then...
Would be on the twenty-first?
It would be on, yeah. So can I make a motion? I can make a motion. Okay, I move that we schedule August seventh, twenty twenty-five, as our regular meeting and forego the meeting on August fourteenth.
Support. Motion on the floor in support. I'm changing my calendar as we vote. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Huh?
The judge.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Are you sure that I think it was on my calendar, and maybe it's one that it was a combined meeting on the fourteenth and the cowl, and it just.
That's what I had, too.
Because I thought that was what you adopted at the beginning of the year, and then it went out of our calendar.
That's what I had, too, for the cowl right afterwards.
I'm not trying to interfere with your vote, I'm just saying, I think you can be sure this is right now, there was nothing scheduled on the twenty-first.
Yeah, because I've, I've got on my calendar the regular meeting, then right afterwards the cowl.
Okay, well, all right, if that's the case, I didn't, I didn't realize that from looking at the calendar, so I will withdraw my motion. If that's, I mean, what is it? What, what?
Yeah, we're checking.
It is scheduled for August fourteenth, are we scheduled for the website? But I have a favor, it's going to be a little bit.
We can just change it on the website also, right? Too easy.
So we would be doing our regular meeting on the seventh, and then the cowl on the fourteenth, is that what I'm understanding?
The regular meeting on the seventh, then the cowl will be on the twenty-first.
Okay.
But is that?
Yeah, we just changed both of them.
So, should I, do I need to amend my motion?
You already withdrew.
Pardon me?
You already withdrew.
I withdrew, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking at you, man, fix, help us out.
So I guess, we can say like this, so technically, because it was seconded and brought forward, we can't really withdraw it.
Right.
Sorry to clear up here.
Thank you.
So we are still sitting at that point, because she would be, it'd be out of, it would be out of order for her to be able to draw it, because it's been seconded and already brought up for discussion.
Right.
Okay, so would I be able to amend my motion and add the twenty-first?
You would, yeah, yeah, you can amend it.
Okay, so.
Currently, though, we are set to have both the regular meeting and the committee of the whole on the fourteenth.
That's what I thought.
So do you want to just leave it as on the fourteenth and do both, or do you want to change it and have one on the seventh and one on the twenty-first?
That's what you need to.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna move that, I'm gonna amend my motion to have the regular meeting on the seventh, as we normally would, and have the committee of the whole then as we normally would on the third Thursday on the twenty-first.
Got it.
Support.
All right, motion on the floor and support for the amendment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now, we're going to vote.
Motion is amended, yeah.
Motion on as amended. Any other discussion on that? I'm gonna change my calendar.
Both calipers?
No.
No.
Can you clarify what that is, Jeremiah?
Yeah, I'm gonna, we'll have our regular meeting on the seventh, the first Thursday of the month, and then we're gonna have our cowl on the twenty-first on the third Thursday of the month. We had originally had it different because of the fair, and we didn't know when the fair was, and we don't have meetings on the fair week, so to accommodate all that, we just put it all in one, you know, so now it's fixed, and we're, I'm going to the fair. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is fixed.
Thank you.
All right, before I open the floor for public comment, this public comment is for things that are not on the agenda, but I will remind everybody, it is not a world stage, if it's not related to Cass County, try not to bring it up, the floor is now open. Floor is now closed. No closed session, any announcements? District one.
Nope.
Two.
No.
Three, nothing from four, five, six.
Just real quick, just touching base on Market One, I know we brought it up a couple times today, just learned as, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Market One, and in one of our recent marketing meetings, I learned that those annual award ceremonies are one hundred percent funded by sponsors, it does not come out, as Cass County being a big contributor to their, to the money that they have, basically, it's, it's an amazing opportunity to have all the community leaders be able to come together and have this moment for them to network together, and it's just nice that it's being sponsored, and it's not costing us anything.
That's a big deal. Seven.
I have no.
Eight, all right. We are adjourned.